Good evening and welcome to this evening's candidate forum presented by the Rocky River Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. We're pleased to welcome all of you here with us tonight. I'd also like to welcome those who are watching online, um, the recording which will be made available on the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland YouTube channel. My name is Alice Allen and I'm the co-chair of the Rocky River Chapter of the League. I'd like to thank the candidates of the Rocky River City Council at Large Race who are here with us this evening, and I'd like to thank the city of Rocky River for the use of this space. Thank you also to all the Rocky River Chapter volunteers for stepping in this event. In keeping with our longstanding forum tradition, questions for the candidates will be submitted in written form. Everyone should have received a card as you entered this evening to write down your questions for our candidates. When you have a question ready, raise your hand and a runner will come and pick up your card. You can also raise your hand if you need another question card. We have two League members at the question sorting table who will be reviewing questions to avoid duplication, to provide a diversity of questions, and to ensure clarity and appropriateness. As I stated earlier, we are recording the program for future viewing on YouTube, and I want to let you all know that personal recording during the program is forbidden by League policy. You are invited to view and share the forum in its entirety on YouTube, but we also have a prohibition on sharing segments of the forum on social media. Finally, we ask the cooperation of the audience in avoiding expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during today's program. Please remember, the purpose of this evening is to hear from the candidates so that each resident might make their own best informed decision regarding their vote, and any vocal interruption takes time away from the candidates. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Nadia Zayim, our moderator this evening. Ms. Zayim is the co-chair of the Westlake North Homestead Chapter and a Greater Cleveland Board Member since 2019. Ms. Zayim is a practicing attorney with a focus on family law, immigration law, and civil litigation. She is proud to be a member of the League because of its nonpartisan dedication to educating and empowering voters, including through candidate forums like this. Please join me in welcoming Nadia Zayim.
Thank you, Alice. Good evening. Um, as she said, my name is Nadia Zayim and I will be your moderator for this forum tonight. The League is a nonpartisan organization, which means we do not support or endorse particular candidates or political parties. We do, however, offer voter education like this forum. Before we begin, let me explain our format. We have four candidates for three at-large seats on Rocky River City Council. David Furri, Lisa Habman, Christina Morris, and Brian Sinalar. We will begin with two-minute opening statements by the candidates. The candidates do numbers prior to the forum, and Ms. Morris will be going first. We'll then ask questions for each candidate to answer. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. We will rotate which candidate answers each question first. There is a timer here in the front that will keep track of the time and let the candidates know when they have thirty seconds and fifteen seconds and when their time is up. At the end of the question period, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement in reverse order, beginning with the candidate who gave their last opening statement. And I will turn it over to Ms. Morris to begin with her opening statement.
Thank you. My name, my name is Christina Morris, and I have had the privilege and honor to serve on City Council for the past six years. I have lived in Rocky River for about fifteen years, and as a transplant, I can tell you what Rocky River offers in services and amenities is something we should not take for granted. We are so fortunate. I am one of those people who loves to take quizzes to find out about their personality. Myers-Briggs, Gallup, Enneagrams, any of those quizzes found in women's magazines when we were kids. I want to tell you that all of those tests report me as being a relationship builder. I love bringing people together and being part of a community. I'm proud to be part of the team that has approved legislation and budgets for a new police station, Bradstreet's Landing, which continues to evolve and improve, the expansion of the senior center, and is now a new fire station. I'm proud to have helped get the Lake Road Clifton Bridge project approved. We have done things you don't see too, namely sewers, 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 and of course, streets. You notice when I speak of these accomplishments, I speak as part of a team. Our City Council works smoothly and with refreshing kindness to one another while we all participate. This dynamic is greater than its membership. I attribute that to strong leadership at the top. Thank you, Mayor. Our city is thoughtful, careful, and forward-thinking, qualities I will continue to embrace and utilize if reelected. In my time on council, we've also tested hybrid police vehicles, maintained our status as a tree city for forty-one years in county, and started programs to plant trees on private property, which is where we lose most of our canopy. We have new places for kids, Elle's Enchanted and Safety Town, as well as improvements to many of our parks. We've added businesses and valuation as well as new positions to our workforce. I now chair the Environmental Committee and work with the wastewater treatment plan to sponsor their legislation. Previously, I chaired the Land Use Committee. I've gained so much understanding about the city and our codes and other facets of municipal government. It's very compelling. I hope to continue. Thank you.
Ms. Habman?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this important event, and thank you to the audience for participating, whether in person or online. My name is Lisa Habman. You might remember me from the last election cycle when I ran for City Council in Ward One and sadly lost by fifteen votes. A little about myself, I'm a bachelor's and a master's in civil engineering from K Western Reserve University. After working for twenty years in the engineering industry, I resigned my post to become a full-time caregiver for my mother, um, as well as my children. My husband and I chose Rocky River twenty-five years ago to be our home, and both of our children were raised here and attended the schools, K through twelve. After losing my mother to COVID early in the first May of the pandemic and coping with the complicated grief that ensued, I briefly took a position at my alma mater in the Sociology Department before opening a psychiatrist practice with my husband, who is a psychiatrist. I've been an active member of the community, volunteering to teach PSRs in Christopher, serving as a Girl Scout troop leader and service unit director, volunteering in the schools as room mom and band chaperone, and speaking to students about environmental engineering. As a member of the Rocky River Women's Club, I volunteered and co-chaired the Rocky River Assistance Program, which runs a fluid pantry for local families. I'm a member of the Green Team, and in 2022, I completed the Rocky River Citizens Police Academy and was even elected class president. Serving at City Council is one more way I want to serve our community. You can learn more about me from my website, lisahabman.com, and I also invite you to sign up for my newsletter, Building Bridges. I look forward to answering questions tonight so you can get to know me better and understand the unique perspective and qualifications I bring to City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Furri?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate tonight. My name is David W. Furri and I'm seeking reelection for my tenth term as an at-large candidate. I was honored to be elected as council president by my peers this last term. Couple of things that I initiated was City Council's Corner on the city website where you get to know the seven council persons a little better. In addition, it boasts what grants the city has procured or initiated, both large and small. I currently chair the Finance Committee and also served on the Planning Commission for two years prior to City Council. I'm a past president of the Rocky River Chamber, past president of the Rocky River Education Foundation, and was truly humbled when they named me as an honorary trustee. I also currently serve as Director for the Rocky River Campus Foundation and was also very active in youth coaching for Rex Sports and Little League. In the past, I've always been committed to this city and liked to live with the pay-forward motto, helping out with numerous Rocky River organizations. I've lived here basically all my life and graduated from RRHS in nineteen eighty-two. When my wife and I started our title agency nearly thirty years ago after being married less than a year, we chose Rocky River and always had our business in Rocky River. In fact, over a third of our employees are residents of the 44116. Rocky River's been very fortunate historically to have both proactive administration and council to guide the city through whatever challenges arise. You need trusted, experienced, and dedicated council to guide through both good and bad times. We have a fiduciary responsibility to balance both the city's best interest and the residents' best interest. The local level, doesn't matter what party you are, if I'm shopping at Heinz or at a football game and someone approaches me about having their garbage picked up, a nasty pothole or speeding on their street, I don't go check the voter records and respond or don't respond on their party. I address the issue because they're not just constituents, they are our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sinalar?
Boy, that's a, that's a tough ax to follow. I feel like I went last couple of years ago too. I'm just gonna repeat what I said. But I do want to second what Christina said. In my time on council, which has been two different sections now of time, it has always been a political group that is very concerned about touching and concerning as many residents as possible for staying within a strict budget that we have. We have expected revenues that, we have an award-winning finance director who, you know, guides us, and we try to stay within those parameters, and again, to affect, you know, going-forward services, improvements, safety for as many people as we, you know, can effectuate that for. So, a little bit about myself, as I said, I've been on council two different eras, I guess. I originally was on council from twenty-fourteen to twenty-nineteen, and then I reran for election and was elected thankfully in twenty-two till today. Almost a twenty-year resident, and, you know, I always tell like a little love story. I met my wife in Lakewood and we're both actually from the south side of Cleveland. And at first, it was Rocky River, that was it, and, you know, I was already falling in love with her, but we knew we wanted Rocky River. And I'll tell you, everyone in this room, I know we can agree on this too, regardless of any beliefs in life, we're blessed to live in Rocky River. You know, maybe another place that has a river, a beachfront, various-sized homes, various neighborhoods, they all have different character. That's why we're here. We're here to protect those things. A little bit more about myself, I'm an attorney by trade during the day. I've also been past president and am honorary trustee of the Rocky River Education Foundation. I've been on the Civil Service Commission in Rocky River. I'm currently on the St. Christopher Finance Council, and I'm a past member of the Rocky River Curriculum Board. So, I believe in service. I believe in giving back to this wonderful city that has given me and my wife and my kids so much. I hope to keep serving.
Thank you. And now, we're gonna start with our first question, and we'll begin with Ms. Habman. What unique experiences do you bring that qualify you for this role? And what qualities do you believe are most important for a member of council?
Well, I would say that my civil engineering experience makes me uniquely qualified for the role. A lot of what comes before City Council is zoning, infrastructure like sewers and roads. I know just recently they had a project with some fuel storage tank removals. I can't even count how many of those projects I've worked on before. And of course redevelopment, I've worked on a lot of redevelopment projects, the Flats East, the Amazon Hub location in Lakewood. So, all of those things, I feel like helped me to identify redevelopment also that's appropriate for the area. And I also had experience working with City Council and mayors in other cities to find, you know, things that would be agreeable to them and regulators. And, and I think that something that would really be important to bring to that is open-mindedness to listen to other people's ideas and thoughts and hear the concerns of people and make sure that you really consider those when you're coming up with solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Furri, the same question.
Could you repeat that again, please?
Sure. I was actually, I was actually going to, so.
Thank you.
What experiences do you bring that qualify you for this role? And are there any specific qualities that you believe are important for a member of City Council?
I guess I've, I've had a lot of leadership positions and, uh, you know, anywhere from being treasurer than president of my fraternity, being co-captain of my basketball team. It's, it's building collaboration on a lot of things, and also communication. When you have a resident, they might be a little irate on something if their sewer got backed up. Getting it addressed, getting city resources out there to see if that was a city problem, if that was a homeowner problem. And I'd say that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Sinalar, same question for you. Did you need me to repeat that or?
Please.
Okay. What unique experiences do you bring that qualify you for this role? And what are qualities that you believe are most important for a member of council?
Again, professional experience, leadership, you know, I don't want to keep seconding Dave just because I go after him, but we've had a lot of the same leadership positions, and it's kind of a funny story, you know. Dave, just like myself, so fifty-fifty in Rocky River Games, and I used to tell my wife, I said, "Dave is really a symbol of somebody of service to the city." And aside from my professional experience, I've been a twenty-year attorney, I've done education and municipal law, uh, you know, I've done insurance, defense. I currently work for the Ohio Lottery Commission as an attorney. But most of all, I think it's patience, kindness, intelligence, respect, getting back to the residents. You know, you look at them, it's in my mind, like I said before, it's a life of service. I love this city. I would do almost anything for it, and when someone needs something, I try to be as attentive to their needs as necessary, and I try to make decisions based on what effectuates the whole, like I said, what's gonna benefit the city the most. I try to be a voice for all, so.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you. I think that personally, because I've been a business owner, I've had a president, I've been president of other clubs, um, my time on council all qualify me, um, but I think that the most important thing and things that I'm good at are that I listen to people, that I'm a team player, and that I understand the stakes of people's stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Furri. What steps would you take to make sure that council's work is more transparent and accessible to the residents of Rocky River?
I mean, we, I'd like to think we're pretty transparent. We have posted everything on the website, on when the meetings are. We have meetings that are, you know, second and fourth, they're legislative, that's when, what I jokingly say, residents can speak, and first and third is committee the whole where residents can be seen but not heard. Again, we're always responsive to, and finally, after many years, I finally got the city to get emails individually for their names, bugging man for that. So, we can be more responsive and rather than using personal emails or other, other things, so.
Thank you. Mr. Sinalar, the same question.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to second Dave, transparency first and foremost is the most important thing, but we, you know, one, we are in a strict budget. There's technology out there to keep doing things, and I think we've shown, we get, you know, better each time. I think we've had our third advent to the website since I've been on council and my time living here, but it's not, you know, we don't, couldn't employ a web developer or communications PR person to, yeah, it's because we're in a smaller city, so it's baby steps. You know, maybe we could look at videotape someday, but, you know, again, that's, I remember when I first got on, it was a little, you know, change is not always easy, but I remember requesting that we put our photos on, and some people didn't want that. So, it's, it's just, you know, not tearing the Band-Aid off, we keep going, we're reaching towards the twenty-first century, and you can see the projects that we're doing, and like Dave said, my, my cellphone is on the website. It's my legit cellphone, you can text me, call me twenty-four hours a day. I think that's pretty transparent, so if anyone needs me, it's always on me. My wife yells at me.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
You know, I have to echo David and Brian, I think that that's true, and I think we're pretty transparent. There are things posted on the website of what we're gonna be talking about, you can find the legislation on the website. I would love to see, uh, video of our meetings, um, if only, if nothing more than the mayor's report, just because I think that that's probably the most illuminating thing that happens in our meeting. Of course, we talk about super important things, but in the end, you find out about when it's all really happening by listening to the mayor. Otherwise, I agree, if I'm available, I, I think we all are, we answer our phones whenever anybody calls, and we are delighted to do so. Thank you.
Ms. Habman?
So, I would agree that the city has made some really incredible strategies in improving communication. Yep, when you go and talk to people, that's still one of the biggest complaints that people have, is that they don't have enough communication or they don't know information. It's an interesting idea that Christine said, I, I agree that, no offense, yes, but the mayor's report is the best part of the City Council meetings, and a lot of times, you know, by the time the minutes come out, maybe some of those things have passed, so it would probably be great if people could see that. I think, you know, just a lot of communication. When I worked for the Sociology Department at Case, one of the things we did to improve communication on the website was to have a, like, a feed from social media streaming on there, because some people have kind of gone off social media, so that might help them, because I don't like the building department, the police department posting, but maybe people don't see those if they're not on their account. And then for myself personally, I've started a newsletter called Building Bridges, so people can get information there, and I include summaries of, you know, interesting things that are going on in City Council, and I would continue that, of course, calls, texts, emails.
Thank you. And finally, we're gonna start with you this time, Mr. Sinalar, so you get the first crack at the question. How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs, and environmental concerns in planning for the city's future?
Can you repeat the beginning? Look, something hit my.
Oh, I apologize for that. How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs, and environmental concerns?
Well, I think first and foremost is the environmental concerns, and we've been doing that since I've been on council. It, you know, as you heard before, sewers, 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 that is an ongoing theme, you know, so I don't want to get into the minutia of it, but it's, it's inverted sewers that cause environmental hazards. It's not good, and we've worked continuously through grants and reaching, working with the federal government, state and local government, you know, obviously our own dollars, and as David hinted to before, flooding basements, I think you've seen less and less of that. Every project we look at, now Spencer Creek is geared towards environmental and getting back to innate nature habitat, the way even Bradstreet's was built was within, you know, different plants and, and lo, more local vegetation that would attract local birds and butterflies and, so we're always keen on focusing environmental, I think, and again, twenty-first century technologies that help the environment.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Can you repeat?
Yes, I can repeat it, yes. How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs, and environmental concerns in planning for the city's future?
Thank you. I think that housing is a national issue, and I would love to see more affordable housing in Rocky River, but I don't know, um, besides approving more apartments, how to do that sort of thing. As far as environmental, I think that that's true, what Brian said, that we do a lot of that right now, and we're really, I think that our city is very forward-thinking about these things and takes them into consideration. In Spencer's Creek, for instance, there's space there for fish to rest so that they can get upstream. I mean, how thoughtful. It's amazing. I love that. Economic, balancing economic development, I think that we're doing a great job of that right now, and I think that the two office buildings on Lake Road are a testament to how well our city has embraced that, and hopefully there will be more economic development here. Thank you.
Ms. Habman?
So, sewers are definitely an important part of improving the environment in Rocky River. The old infrastructure has combined sewers where the sanitary, actually the stormwater is above the sanitary, so the stormwater leaks into the sanitary sewer, which overloads the system, and then contaminated sewage is released to the streams and the rivers and the lake, which is an issue, and the EPA had actually issued an order for Rocky River to comply on reducing what's called their combined sewer overflows. So, that's definitely a big step in helping things for the environment. But I think there's other things we could do locally as well, what we could incentivize developers to sort of incorporate sustainable ideas into their designs. For example, if, you know, more areas are gonna be paved, we could put rain gardens around them, it's a low-cost solution, around the parking lots, which would help with stormwater management and also filter any contaminants from the surface pollution of a parking lot. And I also think that we could sort of incentivize developers to promote affordable housing in their designs. I know at Seven Hundred Lake, a lot of that is still unoccupied, and so it would be nice if they can incorporate affordable things.
Thank you. Mr. Furri, the same question. For you, do you need to repeat it or are you good?
Why don't you repeat it?
How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs, and the environmental, environmental concerns in planning for the future?
I think we've always done that for, Lisa mentioned Seven Hundred Lake, I was vehemently opposed to that for the development of it. That was a long time coming, and now it's, maybe it's kind of floundering a little. There's, obviously, we're a built-out community. Everyone's, they're either doing what's called the Beach Cliff Edition, we're making there, but we still enforce, you know, density codes and site setbacks and other things that both the property owners have rights and the neighbors have rights. In regard to economic, I think the, as Christina said, with the two buildings on Lake Road, there was all outcries over what, you know, the parking problems or traffic problems would be, and I don't think those have materialized, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next question, we're gonna start with Ms. Morris, and this kind of goes along with some things that have already been brought up. What are your thoughts on increasing the availability of low-income housing in Rocky River?
I don't know that I have a, I, I really, I think that that would be dependent on development, and I'm not sure. Then I would, well, that would be great, I would love it, I just don't know how feasible it is at this moment and where they would build it. I would love to have more affordable housing, but I just don't know the answer to that.
Ms. Habman?
Yeah, so I think there's a distinction between low-income housing and affordable housing. I think that probably what would be useful to the city of Rocky River is affordable housing, and right now, young families cannot really afford to live into Rocky River, and then they settle, they start out in another city, but their kids get into schools and then they stay there, and then that results in the problem of low enrollment in the schools, which is not ultimately good for the city. In Lakewood, they had to close one of their local, um, one of their elementary schools due to low enrollment because they're facing the same thing, that the housing is just too expensive and young families can't afford to move into the community. So, I think that we could put requirements on developers, for example, in that Ingersoll area where they wanted to create a live-work community, they could say, you know, it has certain percentage of this has to be, you know, housing at this rate so that people can actually afford to buy themselves homes.
Yeah, there's, obviously, as I said, we're a built-out community. There's out of the old place, a lot to develop, there is things brewing at Ingersoll that are still to be decided, but it's, it's a difficult thing. Rocky River's always been a desired place to live based on services that residents pay for, based on schools, that, based on the way the state funds it, that the residents pay for. So, it's, it's kind of a, it doesn't balance out that how you can have this and still pay for services that you need.
Mr. Sinalar?
From a personal standpoint, I mean, we bought a really beat-up house when we first moved here. My wife was a public school teacher, I'm a government attorney, and so we're not well-to-do by any means, and I personally got my hands dirty and we fixed it up, and hopefully the value has increased, but that was on me, that's what I wanted to do, and since then on my block, I've seen the same thing, families, you know, forty-eight years old, now I've raised three kids through here, two are in college currently, and I see families doing it all the time, and, and property values continue, and I, I was under the impression that's what people wanted. I don't think it's my role to tell a private developer what rate they should set, you know, that's the market, that's not, you know, it's, we deal with the purse strings for the city to provide the best services to our residents. Our residents pay, the taxes taken out, and we provide for them. What goes on in people's private property is a whole other legal argument, we, you know, the city our size, that's not what we can focus on. I can't even imagine how we, you know, like Christina said, how would we, where would we begin? We have a tight, strict budget of municipal, city our size, and that's what we stick to.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Ms. Habman for the next question. What is the primary issue you believe is facing the city of Rocky River, and how would you propose to address it?
So, I think that those issues are probably constantly changing, and would also depend on which neighborhood you're talking to, because everybody has different ideas from visiting all the different neighborhoods while campaigning. Some people wish that they had a park in their neighborhood, others are very concerned with the traffic safety. Some people are experiencing sewer flooding, and, and some people are concerned about the parking near, you know, the parks and the schools. So, I think we, the main thing we have to do is to hear their concerns and think about them, and then research possible solutions that we would be fiscally responsible, but also, you know, help address the problem, and then propose a path forward to address those concerns.
Mr. Furri, the same question. What do you believe is the primary issue facing Rocky River, and how would you propose to address it?
I, I don't think it's coming soon, but it's looming, and this isn't sexy at all, but refuse collection. I think eventually, I know it's not sexy. I think eventually, we're gonna be forced from the landfills that we're paying, I don't know, I think it's forty-eight bucks a ton, that they're gonna say, oh, it's gonna be seventy-five bucks a ton, and, but if we collect it for you, you know, it'll be back to forty-eight or whatever the heck it is. you know, it'll be back to forty-eight, or whatever the heck it is. I think that's an issue that's, it's, it's in the weeds right now. How we address it, that's interesting, because most residents, when this came up twelve years ago maybe or so, everyone loves their scooters, they like their scooters, and if you want to pay for your scooters, we'll give you your scooters, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sandler?
Thank you. Again, to second everyone's point, I think those, to me, are subset issues, like they said, that change. I think the number-one primary issue that starts at the top is and always is, you know, and I hate using this term, but revenue. We only have a certain amount of revenue, and that's taxes, right? That's what comes in, and again, our finance director lays it out perfectly. There's a great estimate every year in advance. You see other cities are doing it after January, and it's, you know, they're waiting and arguing about things. We have it in advance, starting towards, you know, October coming in. And we, a very open, transparent thing. So how do we provide the best services we can for the most amount of people, right? If that's the scooters, if that's the loudest voice, if that's what the people want, then we figure out how to do that in the budget, right? So, you know, we have a very intense street program, no one's left out. I used to hear, oh, Ward One gets better service. I've seen the inside, I've seen how it works, that's not true at all. We have a very detailed, rated system, so everyone's street is done.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, same question for you?
And the same answer as my fellow councilman, it's trash. I think it costs us a lot of money to do what we do, and I would like to, I would really love that if we saved the money and outsourced our trash collection, that maybe we could do more in the composting world. And I would just like to see, like I said, I think that there's a limit to what we can afford and a limit to how much resources we need to put to that, and what we can do environmentally that might be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next question, I just want to remind the audience that if you have a question that you want to ask the candidates, please fill out a next card, and one of our volunteers will kind of get it for you. If you, if you need a next card, also raise your hand, please, because we still have plenty of time to ask some questions, so please, I encourage you to submit your questions. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Furry. We've already talked a lot about infrastructure tonight, but if there is, if you could think of one infrastructure issue that's facing Rocky River, what would that be?
I hate to sound like a broken record, but we're, you know, it's very capital-intensive, sewers. We need to keep working on those. That was one of the initiatives when Mayor Boogs took over. Not to fault previous administrations, but it's a very capital-intensive, and, you know, you don't see it. It's, it's still sewers, again, infrastructure, police got their station, we're working on fire now. We have, actually, we're having initial reviews October sixth at our next meeting on that, and working on financing and whatnot, so. Our Blue Ribbon Senior Center, that's getting an addition, nationally recognized. So, again, it's the services, but it is still capital-intensive.
Thank you. Mr. Sandler, if infrastructure, what's the top treasure in Rocky River?
Yeah, so I think, you know, aside from the people that make up the city, there's two hallmarks, right? Safety and service, and then infrastructure. And part of keeping that safety and service, if you would have seen our police station before and how they were working, I mean, it was, you know, it wasn't up to code, essentially, you couldn't, even from ADA perspective, things of that nature. So those are things, I hear people complain about that, the money that's spent, but those were things that were necessary, right? We can't treat prisoners with disrespect. Fire was the same way, they're, they're clogged in there. So those are infrastructure things, but that strengthened our safety and service. And then, again, I can refer back to the Roads, Streets, and Roads Program. It's, it's very detailed, it's very rated and graded, and, you know, no one's left out, I can guarantee you that. We plant trees when we come up and disturb, you know, a neighborhood from doing the sewer work or just street work. So we're very conscious about that. We have an arborist who has become our safety service director. So I think we do a good job of those projects.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, same question for you?
The, the most important infrastructure is definitely sewer, sewer, sewers. It really is. I mean, we have to do that, it's an, it's an environmental issue. I mean, we still have some lead pipes that we're replacing. We need to finish that work, continue that work until we're done. Other than that, I'm really thrilled that we have our capital projects and that we've got a new police station, that we've invested in the park that is Rad Streets landing, and that we continue to do so, that we're building a fire station, and that the seniors are getting what they need. I, I really, I'm thrilled. I think that we've done a really great job.
Ms. Hugman, same question for you?
Yes, so I just, I know it's not really infrastructure, but I did just want to circle back to affordable housing to address a couple of the points that the councilman made. I, I do think that it is the city council's responsibility to guide developers on what we want them to put in the city. And I think in areas that are not currently developed, that they're developing, that would bring new tax base, and so it still would allow us to continue to provide the services that we do. Now that said, I do agree that the sewers are a big issue. As I said, the city has an order that they have to comply with reducing those combined sewer overflows. But one of the issues is that there's also a residential factor to that. A lot of the old houses never had stormwater sewers, so they have to replace those. I know for myself, the plumber gave me an estimate of fifteen thousand dollars, which is a lot of money for some people, that, you know, they might not be able to afford that. So I think that we have to come up with ways to sort of help residents make, reduce those, you know, capping the downspouts, the ground, diverting their gutters so that they splash out into the flower beds. That's what I'm gonna do with some of mine. So I just think that we can help residents with some of that, and also meet the city's goals.
Thank you. Mr. Sandler, we'll start with you with the next question. How is the city meeting the needs of its seniors, and what more can be done for them?
If I, I just want to address real quick that if I didn't say government had no, well, we have a design review board. As Dave said earlier, in Seven Hundred Lake, I was involved, and it was a zoning issue, I was against it, I didn't like it in between the homes. Some people that lived over there approached me, and I stuck with them the whole way through. So that's, that's how I address it, but that, that's our involvement in the property, we're not totally hands-off. With regard to senior center, I was proud to chair the senior committee when it was budgetary time, when I first got on council. I loved it. I always called it the crown jewel. If you look at our city from, you know, toddler on up, what we provide here in the city, we don't forget about our seniors. And as you see, we've been accredited, I was involved in that, I was on the budget again for that, you know. And it was, it was an amazing process to see this binder this big that our director provided, and we're now one of the few nationally accredited senior centers. As we've already heard tonight, too, we're investing more money to provide more services there. I can't tell you the litany of classes, but the most beautiful thing about it, I always say, our city is only as strong as our least engaged person, the volunteers up at the senior center. It's amazing. I recommend checking it out.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Could you repeat?
Yes, I will, yes, of course, I will. How is the city meeting the needs of its seniors, and what more can be done for them?
I think that our city is absolutely meeting the needs of the seniors here. They are getting an expanded space for lots of new programming, and to be able to have all of their programming in the senior center. They have a new counselor that checks on people. We're doing a lot to help seniors. I would love to see more seniors involved, because sometimes it's hard to get seniors motivated. And I think that Deb had mentioned changing the name of the senior center, just so that it didn't have the stigma of being senior. Just so you know, I'm taking a class there. And I'm, I'm loving it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hugman, same question for you. How is the city meeting the needs of seniors, and what more can be done?
So, as always, I would say, ask the seniors. They would probably know the best, but they feel like it's still lacking. But from my perspective, I have to say that the senior center is a gem. I, I love their hot dog Fridays and all the art festivals that they sponsor, and they just have a lot of great activities. In our practice, our behavioral health practice, I often pronounce the quill, and I give it to people who are new to the community or just feeling isolated, because there's so many great opportunities in there for people to connect with others. As far as, you know, how we can serve them better, I know recently a resident, I don't know if they would be considered a senior, spoke at the city council meeting about extending the adult swim to beyond when school closes, because they still, you know, have nice weather and they like to continue swimming. So I guess I would just say, you know, maybe listen to what they are suggesting and see if we can accommodate any of those. I know when my mom lived in Parma, they had a lot of great resources, like helping with snow leaf removal and installing fire alarms, helping to get medical traclets. Possibly the senior center already does that. I don't know, because I haven't used their services yet, but those are some ideas.
Thank you. Mr. Furry, same question for you regarding seniors?
I try and go over there once a month, preferably on a day they're serving egg salad. It's, and it's amazing how, and I'll usually just sit down at some stranger's table and try and engage with them, and, oh, I'm from Lakewood. I'm from Fairview, I'm from Fairview, and they're all coming to our senior center. Again, we just got re-accredited for, I'm not saying a blue ribbon, but whatever, like one percent or less of national senior centers get it. The, just lost my train of thought there. The senior council, and if you go, we go to the volunteer recognition lunch, and you see the hours that the top people put in, and it is insane, it's a full-time job plus. It's, it's amazing, and some of my friends are going up there now and try not to recognize as a senior, but I guess I am.
Okay, thank you. Next question, starting with Ms. Morris. If there's one thing you could change about our zoning code, what would it be, and why?
Well, we were very involved in changing the code recently for office buildings, and deciding that, I think it was a hundred ten feet, was high enough, even though we had had some previous office buildings at one fifty, I think. And I, I think that our codes possibly need to be updated. For instance, parking is a requirement in lots of new buildings that may not need as much parking as the old formula required. So there's a lot of that that probably just needs to be changed and updated to reflect modern living. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hugman, same question for you?
Yeah, so I don't know currently what zoning changes could be made, but I think that was a very useful change that the city council made previously. The old code had two office building classifications, OB one and OB two. And OB two allowed a hundred-and-fifty-foot story buildings, which is probably not in character with Rocky River. And the other change that they wanted to do was to add a mixed use, like so that it could be residential and commercial mixed use in the building. And so they did develop a third zoning code, and I thought that was a very useful addition. I actually spoke a few times at the zoning board and at the council meetings about how I thought they should just include this mixed-use classification and lower that hundred-and-fifty-foot limit, because none of the buildings in Rocky River currently were that high. I believe the Pink Hotel, Wyndham Hotels, and then a couple of Rents Center Ridge. So, yeah, I don't necessarily know of any zoning changes right now, but I think that if they come up, we should address them.
Mr. Furry, same question for you?
Yeah, nothing really jumps out at me. I know when we worked on that OB one, OB two, there was a lot of deliberation, and that it was basically just the Westlake Hotel and that building to the west of First Bed of Lakewood that could possibly go that high. It's, in my eighteen years on council, we've always had zoning things, and you're deliberating back and forth on, was this applicable in the sixties, and how is it applicable now? But other than that, nothing's really jumping out at me that needs to be addressed or by your stones.
Mr. Sandler, the same question for you?
Yeah, I think, one, everyone's touched upon it, so I appreciate the heads up and the lift. But I think the key to look at there is what we do, a great job of, is, again, coming into the twenty-first century, it might be a slow creep because we're not a big, you know, metropolis, but we're looking at some of our old zoning, and it doesn't need to be updated, you know. Even combining property numbers, we just passed ordinance or legislation to, we had two different parcel numbers, and it's, you know, for efficiency's sake, it just makes sense to make the all campus all one. Again, that's minutia, but it's, we're constantly looking at evolving, getting stronger, getting better, and that's a thing, outdated tall buildings, I don't think anyone wants that in that community, so we look to enhance and make everyone's experience here better.
Thank you. And then we're gonna start with Ms. Hugman with the next question. And it would not be a league event without talking about this issue. But what strategies do you have to encourage civic and voter participation in Rocky River?
Well, I, I do wish there was more participation. I feel like, I said this to the Lummy campaign people, that one of the untapped populations is, is the youth. I feel like we could do a better job of educating kids while they're even still in high school about how to register to vote, how to request absentee ballots. I know I've tried to reach out to students in college about voting, and they don't even really know how to request their ballots. So I think it would be really good if we could somehow address them. And my joke to the Lummy committee was, you know, they, they can vote, but they don't pay taxes, so they're likely to, you know, want to help you out. So I just think we could start young and getting people more engaged.
Thank you. Mr. Furry, same question for you?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've always engaged my kids and others. I think if you take a look at it, the, I don't know if percentage-wise is the right word, but voting numbers are going up or have been going up. I personally, okay, when I was in college, I didn't vote absentee, I don't think it was available then, but I voted in every election, general, primary, whatever, because I think that's your duty. Other than getting, you know, high schoolers to do it, or getting them registered to, and instilling the importance, you know, your vote could make the difference. It's also your duty.
Thank you. Mr. Sandler, same question for you?
Yeah, I, I, one, I think it definitely starts in the home. My two adult children now are both registered voters. You know, but also, it's because I, again, I'm about service, I'm, you know, I wanted to lead by example. And I'm civic-minded, I wanted to, you know, give back in a sense, that's why I've tried to, you know, do as many organizations and as much service as I can to the city I love. And so it starts with them, and I know they discuss it with their friends, and, you know, maybe it's social media today, too, but as Dave said, the numbers do increase. But I've gone to school and talked about the branches of government on a local level in my role on council, you know, thankfully, because my kids were in the schools, and teachers thought it would be neat to come there and talk about the different wards and stuff. So, yeah, it's engagement, but it's baby steps. I mean, we have twenty-two thousand residents and not nearly close to that registered voters, so it's, it's baby steps. Like I said, it starts in the home, and it starts to lead by example. I try to stay engaged in the city as much as possible. My kids' friends know I'm on council, their parents know I'm on council, so it's about staying involved.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
So I think my kids' friends are kind of scared of me, because I walk up to them with my laptop, and I'm like, have you registered to vote? Do you, so they get registered in my house. I agree that we start young, and that's the best way to teach that it is a duty, and it is a responsibility, and it makes a difference, and that your voice is so important. I try to write postcards every season to do what I can to, and I try to do that in a non-partisan way, but I also am part of the den club, and I drop lit, and I ask people to vote all the time. I, I think it's super important, and I hope you all vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would hope that since they all came to this forum tonight, that they're all active voters and plan to vote early or on November fifth. Okay, our next question, we're gonna start with Mr. Furry. Looking back on your professional career, is there anything that you would have done differently, and what is that?
Wait, on which career?
Your professional career, or your public career, because.
It's interesting, because like I said, I started off in banking, commercial lending and that. Met my wife, she was at the time going to law school. and that. Met my wife. She was at the time going to law school for the real estate end of it, had no desire to hanger shingle out for, you know, GP or anything like that. And we decided to start a title agency. I thought I was at least as smart and twice as smart as some of the clients that I had at commercial lending. And so we said, we're young, we got a relatively low mortgage payment, no kids, let's do it because we might never do it. There's been times when it's been great and there's times when it's been not so great, you know, when you're having computer issues, HR issues. But I think that's also helped me with a different view of running my, owning our own business and also bringing that to council. So regrets, to quotes Frank Sinatra, I've had a few, but not worth mentioning.
Thank you. Mr. Cindallard, same question for you. Any professional or any regrets in your professional public career that you would do differently?
I'll tell you, I would never be clearer on an answer than this one. No, absolutely not. I wouldn't ever test the butterfly effect. Where I'm at today, and I can wholeheartedly say that I'm blessed, I'm lucky, I have three healthy children, a beautiful wife who supports me, hopefully. I probably anger her sometimes, I'm sure I know. And again, I'm biased. I live in the greatest city in Ohio and I've been involved. What, what more could I ask for? If I, if I had a regret, and like I said, I don't, I don't want to test any butterfly effect where I change that and I don't have one of my kids or my wife or, you know, God forbid, you know, so it's no chance. Sorry. You're never going to get an answer other than that.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, same question for you. Any, anything looking back professionally or publicly that you would do differently?
No.
Fastest answer yet. Ms. Havman?
So I, I do try to live by the philosophy, do not have regrets, because I feel like even mistakes are things that I can learn from and, and change. But there is one regret I would have. So while taking care of my mother, I had started to write a book called A Humorous and Thoughtful, A Useful and Humorous Approach to Dementia Caregiving. And my mom had vascular dementia and along the way, I felt like I was losing a little bit of her every day, but I learned a lot going through the process. And so I originally started writing the book for my children in case they have to take care of me in that way someday. But I, I really wish I had finished it into a form that I could publish it because I feel like everyone could really benefit from those things. And I introduce a lot of humor because my mom, who had survived a lot of adversity, you know, escaping, fleeing her home, escaping a war camp during World War Two, she would always say that if you don't laugh, you'll cry. And so I tried to incorporate her humor in my life lessons with dealing with her and to that. So maybe I'll finish it still eventually.
Thank you. This is going to be the final question before we get to closing statements. And we'll start with Mr. Cindallard. What is one guiding principle that you will take with you on city council?
Uh, you know, in, in my mind, I know this might be a cliche term, but the people, the will of the people, the voice of the people, you know, as far back as I can remember, even the, you know, the insight to, to kind of the fire, immediate run, I always had, like I said, I was interested in, or I mean, I'd participated in other organizations, coached sports, and a group of people said, you should run, you should run. And I, you know, it was kind of a melee back then. I could go through the whole history of some appointments and I decided to run. I had a good ground swell of support from people around here and, you know, I got on. And I think I bring perspective, you know, to council. That's the one unique ability. I think, you know, when you look at, it's about serving people, you know, and that's, you know, that's what I care about, serving the most people that I can touch upon and provide the best services I can for the most on people.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Thanks. Service is the, okay, what was guiding?
Guided principle.
Yeah, service is the guiding principle. I was thinking about service. I think, you know, I was, I served as a PTA president when my eldest was in elementary school and did acts of service that were like that and felt a little smaller. Then this, this feels a lot bigger to me and it is the most rewarding thing to, to do, to be somebody who's chosen to be your voice. It's such an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Havman? What is one guiding principle that you will take with you on city council?
Yes, so I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I really, I mean, it is all about service. I think it's really important to human people and represent what they want, not necessarily what you want, because you're their voice and it's not my city, it's our city. So I guess I could just really, you know, be there to be a representative for the people in the city.
Good. Finally, Mr. Furry.
I'd say honesty. My rooting for that was growing up on Cornwall. Parents were all talking in the middle of the street. I ran over Mrs. Walker's toe on my bike. My dad said I had to go apologize. I said I did. He found out I lied to him. That lab it soaked didn't taste too well, and that was my dawn shed moment of being honest, and that's guided me ever since. And to echo some, obviously, service also, you know, done enough things in this community, that passion of service and that's it.
Okay, thank you. It's now time for the candidates to give their closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes, and as I said earlier, we will follow the reverse order of the number selection, beginning with Mr. Cindallard.
Thank you. You've heard this a lot tonight, right? Service. It is true, and that's, you know, from my perspective, as I've said a couple of times tonight, right, I feel like giving back in a sense to the city that's given me so much. Three kids went through excellent schools. The city services here are amazing. And so I, I want to, you know, give whatever I can to be that link between people, what they want and what we can afford within that strict budget. And it's seamless. If you, if you come, you know, it would be great, as Christine said earlier, if more people came. Like I said, a strong city, right, is only as strong as its least engaged person. So a lot of people can sit on their hands and not be involved, but I think the strongest people are involved. And I see many phases around here. In fact, thanks again to the League tonight for this. And, you know, it's sad in a sense. I've only seen some of them, not since graduation. We have kids that just graduated, so it's great to see all of you and catch up and see how the kids are doing. But that's what it's about. You know, until it was taken away from boosters, they said Dave preceded me. I'd sell fifty-fifty whether I had a kid playing football or not. I just want to be involved. This city brings a smile to my face. It makes me well up sometimes. I couldn't think of a better place. And I know people can check back at other league events like this. I've said it's, to me, it's like a slice of heaven on earth. It really is amazing. It's made up of various people, various ideas, and I love hearing from people from, like you said, the project on seven hundred. A group gathered around and they called me early on, hey, we're hearing about this project. I love that. If they feel I can effectuate their, their love of the city and they want to stay here in any way and I can do that, I'm proud and happy to do that. And, you know, I've never been in sales, but I think I could sell this city in a heartbeat because it's easy. Because the people walk around here, everyone smiles, you know, everyone, you don't see many angry people unless you get on social media, and I try to stay away from that. But I love this city and I'm willing to do whatever and listen to all. Thank you. I hope to have your support.
Thank you. Mr. Furry?
As a follow-up to that fifty-fifty, since you mentioned it twice, I always used to work the south gate and then people would avoid me and go to the north gate. So then I went to the north gate to get them and then they wouldn't even make eye contact with me. But, once again, I'd like to thank the Legal Women Voters for this candidate's forum. I hope everyone gained some insight to the At-Large candidates. Unique, trusted, experienced and dedicated council, and I believe I have exhibited that. Not afraid to speak my mind. In fact, my wife states that I can be a little too straightforward at times. I voted against one budget a few years back as the administration had increased sewer rates to help balance the budget, but that needed council manic action, which we had not voted on and felt strong enough to vote no. I always get back to residents promptly on their issues. They might like what I have to say or they might not like what I have to say and what the city can or cannot do, but regardless, they have a better understanding. Picking up garbage or plowing streets are not dependent whether you're a blue stater or a red stater. I have a fiduciary responsibility to balance both the city's best interest alongside the residents' best interest. I believe I have historically exhibited that and would like your continued support November fourth. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Havman?
As an engineer, I feel like I am uniquely well qualified to address the infrastructure and redevelopment issues that come before city council. My engineering and project management experience, combined with my firsthand knowledge of zoning and construction projects, allows me to bring a unique skill set and a different perspective than the council has currently. While caring for my mother, I came to appreciate the challenges facing the old, the young, and the people who are responsible for taking care of both of them. My current role in managing a behavioral health practice has also made me more sensitive to the interests of local business owners. Residents deserve a government that is representative of the community, addresses their concerns and shares their values. As a resident of the community, I'm aware and ready of the concern of residents. However, nothing has prepared me more for serving on city council than actually campaigning. During the last campaign, I visited every street in Ward One where I was running at that time and knocked on two thousand doors, and I was amazed to hear different perspectives than I already knew about. I continue to be determined to be engaged in as, with as many residents as possible now that I'm running for At-Large. For those who I don't meet face to face, I hope that they do sign up for my newsletter, Building Bridges. I have a sign up sheet up outside. Through these outreach efforts, more than anything else, it's given me the knowledge, I feel, to help serve the people that I would represent. The unique concern, I, through these engagement efforts, I learned the unique concerns of the individuals as well as each neighborhood. And each neighborhood does have a different personality. Communication and responsiveness are still among the most common complaints of residents. All of my roles, resident, parent, volunteer, caregiver, business owner and engineer, have provided me with the technical, legal, financial and personal skills to deal with issues that come before city council while being fiscally responsible and responsive to residents. During the twenty-five years I've lived in Rocky River, I've been an active member of the community, and now I hope to continue my service by being a city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Morris.
Thank you. I want to say that I truly enjoy being on council. We are a collaborative and respectful group of people who have the same goals, to help our neighbors and to make Rocky River the best place for us all. I love going to meetings. I love hearing the mayor's report. I love understanding what it takes and participating in a city that's run responsibly. If other cities envy us, they should. By all measures, we're very special. I love being part of the groups in the city as a council person. I love the camaraderie and realizing goals with them. I love hearing residents' stories, your stories, listening to you. I love my neighbors. I even love working the paper shredding line at city hall, checking in the cars, except for when it's raining. I think the reason I like council most, though, is that it gives me a sense of purpose and giving back. If I can help someone get a shield for their street light or a different pattern for a traffic lights on their street, I am in. If I can connect them to the right person at city hall or push for traffic calming, I can do that. It's very satisfying to serve. I still want bike lanes and more trees. I want to keep our town safe for all the kids with their new rides. I want to keep our town safe for the people on bikes and in cars. I want new systems that don't tax our climate issues. I know that will come when the time is right. I want to be here for that. And I want to be here for our residents. I'm grateful to have had our, had time on our city council, and I would be thankful for your vote so that I can continue to make Rocky River a superb suburb. Thank you to the League for having us and promoting and organizing democratic participation in local elections. And thank you for coming and participating in democracy.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our candidates for participating tonight. And now that we're at the end, everyone give them a round of applause. So on behalf of the League, thank you because this would not be possible without all of the candidates agreeing to participate. And thank you to our audience for your thoughtful questions and your close attention during the forum. For more information on other races that will be on your ballot in November, please visit vote411.org. That is the League's nonpartisan voter guide. It also provides nonpartisan information such as local and statewide issues, candidates, polling locations, election dates and hours, early voting options and voter ID requirements. If you're not, if you're not already a member of the League and you found this event interesting and worthwhile, please consider joining. We're easy to find online and I believe we receive some materials outside. Candidates, are you willing to say for a little bit afterwards if people have questions for you? Thank you. And I will turn it over to Alice for some final remarks.
Thank you all. I did want to remind you that our forum is funded by our nonprofit education fund. So if you found it valuable to have a forum like this, please consider making a donation to the League. There's a donation box at the back table and a QR code on the handout sheet with a link for donating. And again, this program has been recorded and will be posted on our YouTube website in the coming days. Our YouTube channel is LWV Greater Cleveland. Thank you all for coming.